Good morning, and we'll call the meeting to order for the day. First item on our agenda is approval of today's agenda.
I would move approval with the addition.
Yes, we do have an addition. We have a motion with the addition, we have a second.
Okay.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. And we have several employee recognitions this morning. Frank Reno. You're accepting a recognition. Fifteen years for Frank Reno presenting a grateful recognition to Clay County citizens. Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning.
Presented a grateful recognition of twenty years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County citizens. Kirk Fisher. Motor grader, operator. Morning.
Morning.
Presented Kirk a grateful recognition of twenty-five years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County citizens. Sue Olson, registered dietitian.
Sue is not here, but I accept that her's in town. I think she's coming, but normally she's in first till ten thirty today.
Sue has put in twenty-five years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County citizens. I want to thank you, Honorable. Allison Austin, case eight. Good morning. Presented Marson, grateful recognition of thirty years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County citizens. Wow, congratulations. Okay, citizens to be heard, are there any citizens that would like to be heard on any item not on today's agenda? Seeing none, approval of the minutes of the June sixteenth and twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen meetings.
I'll look for who.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Approved payment of bills and vouchers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Okay, review updated Clay County emergency operations plan, Lieutenant Brian Green.
He's, Mr. Chair, he's gonna be right back in there, we're gonna grab a picture. Bill said maybe right back in.
We can probably take the request the full-time corrections officer, that won't take us long.
Here he comes.
Oh, okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good.
You don't even get a break after twenty years, huh?
No. Well, I've got, I give you the, kind of the packet information. Basically what I've got is the updated emergency operation plan for two thousand and fifteen. I do have it in a tonic form here. Take one. Otherwise I can give you the hard book version, take a little while to get through, but I will leave the hard book with Brian, I know he wants to read it verbatim. So again, the first year, in its four-year cycle, the county board has to review it and take a look at it, approve it by adoption sometime later, probably at the end of July, if that'd be okay.
Be fine.
Give you plenty of time, go through it.
Brian, would you, would you be able to just highlight, you know, by the time we do the final, final approval, would you be able to highlight for us any changes that have?
Yep, I sure will, yes. We have to do a, it's kind of a min walk, they call it, there's a format where you have to go through to stay in there, sort of update certain things. That's kind of new in the horizon, and I'll go through that.
I mean, I think if you just give us the high level.
Yes.
I'll definitely. Doesn't need to be real detailed, but just, rather than us have to look in there to find out what the change is.
Yeah, some of the highlights of the plan.
We'll do.
Any other questions from Ryan this morning? Thank you. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, Justin. Full-time corrections officer vacancy. Good morning.
Good morning. We have a vacancy that needs to be filled, we had a correctional officer that decided to go into banking after being with us for three and a half years, so we're looking to get that filled.
That's quite a switch.
Yes. It is. We were a little shocked by it, but.
So this is currently budgeted?
It's a mandated position by the Department of Corrections, it's part of our staffing plan with the DOC. There is a small cost savings, since he's been with us for three and a half years, about twenty-two hundred and eighty dollars annually.
Move to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Here and now, in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Kirk, come on up. Good morning. We're moving right along this morning. Approval of landfill location stipend to Holly Township.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, actually, we have talked about this at the solid waste advisory committee meeting, and we've also talked about it with Grant, yourself, Mr. Chairman, and Kevin in our solid waste committee. Essentially, and this is, this is Commissioner Mojo's idea, so I probably should let her introduce it and talk about what it is. She, she came up with the idea, I think it's a very good idea, and I think, as I mentioned before, everybody else that she's brought up to thinks it's a good idea as well, so I'll just turn it over to you, and I'll be here if you have anything to jam here.
It sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, I think the idea behind it is to, a location fee that would go to benefit Holly Township for having hosted the landfill for a number of years, and I see that Everett is here as well on behalf of the township, and I think it's long overdue, like someone said at the solid waste committee, no one is running forward with arms wide open, no other townships are saying, have the landfill in our township, we'd love it, so I think a little bit goes a long way to continue having a good relationship with the township, and I appreciate Kirk's work on this as well.
Essentially, just so we let people know what we're talking about, what we're talking about is five thousand dollars per year to Holly, of that amount, twenty-five percent of the amount has to be spent on waste issues, the rest of it can be used for any, anything that the township so chooses. What we try to do, the reason we came up with five thousand dollars originally is, is that we talked about doing it initially by weight, but we're not quite far enough along as far as setting fees, as far as the weight basis, and this is as close as we could get to last year for twenty-five cents per ton.
So the township is happy with this plan, I suppose they were getting nothing, so...
Do you have anything else to say?
No, we were, just so you know, we did not ask for it, it was a surprise to us that if we hadn't brought more, a little more than that, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I want to thank Commissioner Mojo for bringing this up too, I, you know, I've served on the solid waste advisory committee, I think since I've been on this board, and I know Everett's been, been on there equally as long, I think, or maybe longer.
No.
Okay. But, but anyway, that township does go through issues related to that, that no other township has to deal with, and I, I think it's, I think it's good on the part of the solid waste department to give them that stipend, and I would move that, that we do so.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chair. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yeah.
Frank.
I'm not opposed to this, that's a great thing we're doing here, but are we setting up some sort of precedence, do, when we have something in a township that we're gonna give the township for it, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what else to do, if that will hit or whatever happens.
I'll try to, I'll try to speak to that, and I, I think the comments that Jenny referred to might have been my comments about no other township would be standing up, as a matter of fact, I've also worked on all the regional planning that we've tried to do for regional solid waste, and I remember back when we were working with North Dakota, and even going as far as having people from Grand Forks coming here, and to think back about, it wasn't too long ago where Grand Forks ran out of landfill space, and they couldn't get another spot in the county to do it, they were getting sued by townships, for lack of it, and is there precedence? There is, only to the extent that we would have another landfill in another township in Clay County, because this is so unique to anything else that we do. This is a payment for disruption, as far as I'm concerned, that is caused by having that landfill in that township. So that's, and I, and we did, you know, we did, that was talked about at SWAC as well, you know, but ultimately, this is a unique circumstance.
No, no, like I said, I agree with it, I've got nothing against it.
But for instance, if there was a gravel pit, for instance.
Yeah, gravel, right, that's what I was thinking.
It is a nuisance per se, but it also generates revenue because of gravel tax, and so, this specific instance, there's no other monies that are going directly back to the township, and, and I guess that's where initially I saw an issue with it.
No, that's good, I just kept checking on that.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
Very good. Thanks for much.
Thanks for coming to Everett.
Well, nobody from social services is here right now, do some committee reports, Or Rhonda, are you ready? We're ready for you, here we are. Request to hire one full-time social worker for child protection.
All right, I did have my supervisor come, so we'll go ahead and get started. Let's see, so I am just happy to report that...
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, is that in our packets?
This, yep.
That's this?
Yep.
All right, I was looking for something different.
So, I think it was March, mid-March, Stacy and I came to the board to talk with you about the caseload issues in our child protection service area, and at that time you had approved hiring two point five child protection workers to deal with the caseload, and at that time we did talk, there was a lot of legislative activity happening, that, in fact, that day we came to the board, that's when the governor signed some legislation enacting some new child protection language. So we also were hopeful that some funding would come through, and it did, so we're excited to share that with you, and also request one additional FTE based on the funds that we received. So on the first page, what I wanted to just outline was the two point five FTEs that we had talked about in March, we did hire the two full-time employees, one started May twenty-seventh, the other one started May twenty-eighth. The point five FTE we haven't hired yet, we're still, at the time we came to the board, we were also asking for a point five adult protection worker, so our goal was to have one FTE sharing the caseload, we're still kind of trying to work, work that through and see how that would best work, so we haven't hired that position yet. So today's request is to share with you the, the funding that came through, and then also to request one additional FTE with the funding. So on the next page shows you the allocation amount, and what each county received, and the Department of Human Services' calculation about how many FTEs they think each county should be able to add based on the funding. And I think I shared in the packet two performance standard information, as well as, did I share the statute language? Maybe that didn't actually get in the packet, but, at any rate, for Clay County, then, they've approved two hundred and five thousand, six hundred dollars, and then the performance withheld, withhold is fifty-one thousand, four hundred. So the way this is supposed to work is in July of each year, each county will get their base allocation, which is eighty percent, so in July here, we will get the two hundred and five thousand, six hundred dollars, and then, I believe, in February of each year, they will take a look at whether counties have met the two performance standards, which was included in your packet. And if the counties have met that performance, each performance standard, then they will receive the additional twenty percent, so ten percent for each performance standard. It says in the statute language that counties who do not meet the performance standards, their ten percent will be reallocated to counties who are meeting it, which doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah, I don't do that.
And I suspect that will change at some point, I mean, obviously, counties aren't meeting their performance standard, they need some support or help in doing so, so to take away funding kind of defeats the purpose in my mind, but, so you'll see with our performance standards, the first, or the third page in then, it says child protection staffing service allocation, so for Clay County, it is showing you two thousand twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, and you'll see for us, our performance has gone, has actually gone down in the monthly face-to-face visits by case workers. The threshold is ninety percent in this area, our three-year average is ninety-one point two percent, but our most current calendar year, two thousand and fourteen, is at ninety point three. So we're meeting it, but just barely, so this is a performance standard that obviously we will have to make sure that we continue to watch. And then the second performance standard, it's timely face-to-face contact with alleged child victims, so for Clay County, you'll see our percentage here, we've really been working on this, so from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and fourteen, we've gone up from sixty-one point nine percent to eighty-four point eight percent. The threshold here is also ninety percent, so we would not be meeting this performance standard, and obviously, this is one we have to, you know, we just have to work on. Many counties are not meeting this performance standard, on the bottom of that grid, you'll see twenty-two counties are meeting the ninety performant, or twenty-two counties are meeting the ninety percent, and the rest are not, so a lot of counties, we all have a lot of work to do in that area, but we have till February, and we're, I thought maybe Stacy was here. So again, these are good performance standards, we want to be getting out to seeing kids right away when we get a malt treatment report, we want to be seeing them face-to-face monthly, especially if they're in foster care, we have an open child protection case, so we don't necessarily disagree with these performance standards, we just have to have the staffing in order to be able to manage the caseload and get out there and make those contacts. Oftentimes, the struggle is, is that we're trying to find families, we go to their homes and they're not there, we set up appointments, and the appointments aren't kept, or, you know, we're struggling trying to find them, that's why we miss some of the contacts, but... So we are, we are hopeful that you would approve that third position, we, one of the things that is a little bit of a struggle here is, in the statute, it basically talks about counties cannot supplant existing funding and use this money to replace what counties have levied for child protective services. And it also, so it doesn't, so then, the Department of Human Services came out with a bulletin, which came out just last week as well, I think it was on Thursday, and a lot of counties have been asking, well, we just hired child protection staff, so we want to use the funding for just recently hired staff. They say in the bulletin that you cannot use it for any staff hired prior to June thirtieth. Well, our two staff that we brought on came in on May twenty-seventh and May twenty-eighth, so thirty days before. I, the counties have talked to the commissioner, listened to Justin about this, because it was March seventeenth that the governor passed legislation increasing child protection, changing some language, counties were gearing up for this, so we'll, we'll argue it, we'll be able to show that these are new staff that were added.
Well, it was us being proactive in terms of trying to, you know, anticipate it was going to be approved, and so, yeah.
There's a plan that I have to submit by the end of August, and so I would, if the board approves the position today, I will lay out these three point five positions with the new funding, and it looks like the plan would require board approval, and I'll be very clear on there when we added these staff, and I'll outline that, and we'll send it in, but I just wanted to alert you to the language in the bulletin, I think it's something we would, many counties will argue.
Yeah, hopefully they'll understand, I mean, we were reacting, assuming we were gonna get the money, so we wanted to be ahead of the curve here, so, yeah. Wayne, you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rhonda, you said you haven't quite yet hired the point five full-time equivalent protection, child protection social worker, are you looking for somebody who is willing to work a half-time job, or are you combining it with another half-time job, so that one person would be the full-time equivalent?
Well, the point, the point five that you had approved before, you also approved a point five adult protection worker.
Could that be the same person?
So our thought was it would be the same person.
Thank you.
However, I'm not sure if that's how it'll end up.
Right, but it would be, I think it would be rather difficult to get somebody half-time job.
Yeah, it can be challenging, but...
Okay, thank you, answer my question.
Jenny.
The one that is approved and pending, are you currently advertising for that, or you have yet to advertise it because you're trying to work out the logistics?
We have not advertised for it, we hire off the Minnesota merit list, so sometimes if, if the names we get from the Minnesota merit system is not lengthy enough, we will do local advertisement, and then they have to go through that whole testing process, and we have not posted for it internally yet either, we're still trying to work out the logistics.
And then my other question, the monies are coming from the budgeted salary, but then the two percent not included, is that the, where's the two percent?
Oh, well, what I, us, in the budgeting process, my thought is, is if the board approves a two percent for two thousand and sixteen.
Okay.
These do not...
Include what that would be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Rhonda on this, one of the board's wishes?
Well, these are two thousand and fifteen rates, though.
Yes. Yep.
Mr. Chair, do you need one motion, Rhonda?
Um, yeah.
Will that cover everything?
Yes, I will bring, once I complete the actual plan that needs to go, then I would come back.
I still move what she's asking for.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Ryan?
And Mr. Chair, the, again, I'm assuming the motion includes that any backfill would be, be filled.
Oh, yeah, if we...
That's exactly what I was saying.
That's what I thought you said.
That's what the motion included, thanks, Brian.
Typically, we don't have people wanting to move into child protection.
Child protection, but it could happen.
Yeah, if I could just add one clarification now, just to make sure it was clear, in July here, we will get the eighty percent, the two oh five, in February is when we will get the performance. Now, there is a chance, if we miss those performance measures, we may not get that revenue, so if we don't, the positions here would exceed the two oh five, so I just...
But I think you will get there.
We're gonna work, we're gonna work hard.
We have confidence in you, Rhonda.
We will get there, we'll...
No pressure.
No pressure. Stacy here? No pressure. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rhonda.
Thank you.
You want to do the...
Sure.
Oh, sure. Sorry, yeah, we'll do the addition.
I did have an addition.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Apologize for that. We have an employee within our agency that is kind of getting hit on all ends, she's had some medical complications, is scheduled for a C-section coming up, she's not eligible for FMLA, she's not eligible to request a transfer of sick leave for her situation, and based on the time she's been out, and her scheduled C-section, and delivery of her baby, she will exceed the four weeks that the personnel policy allows for unpaid time, so I'm just requesting that she be, that we be allowed to grant her the additional six point four weeks of time that she would need to be out for a maternity leave unpaid.
Kayla?
Mr. Chair, I certainly have no problem with it, but I would just like to hear from Darren on how this impacts our whole policy.
As part of personal policy, any unpaid leave of absence over four weeks requires the board approval, and since this individual hasn't been here the whole year, that is required by FMLA, she is not covered under FMLA right now, but she has had some complications in her pregnancy, so she has been out and will be out for, what, six point four weeks, I think, or six point two weeks? And so this does go along with our policy of coming to the board for the unpaid leave.
Very good. Wayne?
Does she qualify for other employees to donate?
Right now, she does not, what it is, is you have to be out a total of twenty consecutive days, and she will not have met that criteria prior to her C-section or her birth, so that's...
If, if that twenty days had accumulated and passed, then she would have...
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, more than wishes?
If the unfortunate thing happens that, I mean, we're asking for six point four, I mean, hopefully, nothing will happen, I mean, that comes back, but what, if she does have to have a more extended time, would, I mean, how long can we leave an employee out there that would...
A lot of that has to do with what the department can manage, you know, we've, we've had it both ways, on people that have been on extended unpaid leave, some of them that were not covered under FMLA anymore, we, I believe we had one that was released because we, there was no end date to it, they didn't know when she could come back.
Okay.
There was others that we have extended for a longer period of time, because that position, we were backfilling with some variable hours, and it wasn't a technical position...
The work was still getting done.
Exactly, yeah, so a lot of that has to do with the department, if she comes back, you know, at the end of those weeks and say, I can't come back for another two or three months, then we probably have to come back to the board and really decide on whether we could extend that, that leave or not, but we, at that point, we kind of take it day by day to see how, how everything is... day by day to see how, how everything is progressing, in contact with doc, getting doctor's notes and, and finding out, you know, is it going to be a week? Is it going to be a month? Is it going to be six months, whatever? And then we kind of have to make some decisions as it goes along. If there's, if there's complications with her after the baby, you know, we would have to look at that as well. So, it's hard, it's hard to say, "Yeah, we would extend it," or "No, we wouldn't," based on what the circumstances are at the time.
I'll move to approve the request.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Darren, Rhonda, thanks. Okay, let's get our committee reports done. Wayne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Thursday, January 25th, Clay County's Board meeting. General Business, Head Start report regarding rules and regulations regarding eligibility for those to enter Head Start. Report on Community Action Conference held in Oregon. Reports from the Head Start Policy Council and Executive Director Steve Nagels' report, and then retirement of Joe Peterson, and everybody sad to see him go, but wishes him well. On Monday, June 29th, Clay County Collaborative Governance Board meeting. General Business, review of fiscal year 2016 upcoming budget. We reviewed and discussed the truancy intervention program, primarily regarding the four rural school districts of DeWorth, Clinton Felton, Barnesville, Holly, and Yulin. Hit it all. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Frank?
Yeah, I went to a couple of retirements, Joe Peterson's retirement also, and Jeremy out of the Highway Department. And went to the Fargo-Moorhead Council of Governments, Holly Comprehensive Transportation Plan. There, they discussed, oh, the future use plan for Holly, you know, so Dexter Territory Area, stuff like that. And I discussed the sidewalk plan, so there's going to be another meeting scheduled in the near future again with updates that we received from Holly, what they would like to see and stuff like that. So, so that's, committee's coming along pretty good. After that, I also went to the family healthcare thing on June 25th. They showed a tablet they're going to give people. It's got five different languages on this tablet that you can register on, you know. So, it was sort of a unique thing that they're starting there, you know. They're going to use this tablet to the people. They decide which language they need, and they could register with that tablet. And it was good, very interesting. They also want to change the reporting requirements from fiscal year to calendar year. And there was a lot of discussion going on that, you know, how it's all going to work into their plan. And I also went to the CEO evaluation. That was it.
Thank you. Kevin?
The only meeting I had this week was our jail construction meeting yesterday, and it was a, it was a, I think, a very good meeting. I think we made a lot of progress yesterday, and as our primary objective has been to kind of iron down a site plan. And we certainly came closer to the finalization on the site plan of the jail today, where that's going to be and how it's going to sit in its current location, but expanded. In addition, we're, we're trying to prepare for where the LAC will go. Clearly, we've been discussing some buyouts, you know, within, within the neighborhood, and, and we're starting to map out what that would look like. One of our big challenges, of course, is parking, and so we're, we're moving in the right direction with accomplishing that. So, unless, Grant, unless you have something additional to add to that, or if Brian wants to add some more. But that was the primary issue yesterday that we dealt with. It's just ironing up here.
I think that covered it. We're getting things narrowed down, and I think things are moving along probably better than could be expected. So, how about Prairie Lake Solid Waste, was that, since we...
Oh, yes, yes, we...
Since we had our last meeting.
Yeah, that's right. We didn't have a meeting the week before, did we? So, you're, that's right. We did, I forgot that we didn't have a meeting last Tuesday. I did have Solid Waste Advisory, and of course, the, we had the head of the Minnesota Pollution Control was at our meeting that, that morning to talk about that grant that we had received and to talk about the, the importance of collaborating with other counties. He was very pleased with that. On Friday, the 26th, we did have a Prairie Lake Solid Waste meeting. And the last time I reported to you, we were having issues with the contractor and, and the whole deal about the lack of steam generation based on what was supposed to happen. So, there was mediation, mediation session that had happened the day before that, and obviously mediation went nowhere. And so, what we did as a board is we basically terminated their contract and are going to seek, first off, we need to fix the problem so that, so the board has decided that we're going to go ahead and hire that to be done outside of them, but we're still going to be looking at them for damages. There was, I believe, Grant, I believe there was an excess of $500,000 that was withheld from the final contract. And so far, the estimates that we have come in would be well below that to fix it. So, that's kind of where that's at right now, and we're hoping that, that additional steam generation will help the revenues. And they have, they have been, they've, they've fallen way below what they anticipated in revenues. And one of the big, in addition to the loss of steam, they, the, all of the recyclables have been way under estimated in terms of revenue. So, we've got some issues there that we've got to resolve. They've put together a special committee for budgets now, and they asked me to serve on that, so we'll try to get that figured out. It's similar to what we went through in the juvenile detention center a while back, but we'll get it figured out.
Okay, thanks. They were pleased, I think, too, about our plans to hire a truck.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. I reported on that.
That was brought up, and I think they were pretty happy about that, so...
Yeah.
Okay, Jenny?
I did attend the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. I'm not appointed to that, but had proposed that location fee or stipend, so I appreciate your support and their support on that. But also, not having never been to that committee, I was impressed. You have great community members on that committee, and it's, it's great, great to see people commit their time to be able to serve that way. I had Historical Society. They put on the big Viking Festival two weekends ago, and the weather was perfect, had a great turnout. And I attended, I went to the Highway Department. They had a retirement recognition for Jerry, their shop foreman, after many great years of service. And they also had a, a meeting following that, talked about the road constructions that are going on right now, and their projects are currently ahead of schedule. Let's hope they stay that way. Hope to be opening those in the next couple of weeks, I think, Frank.
Yeah, 18 I think should be open.
Right, and then 52 shortly after. I did talk a little bit about some of the issues with county road sticks that we're continuing to have out by roll log. And then they did talk about the contractor that they went with for dust control this year. They've had a lot of issues with dust control. Just, I don't know if it was the quality of the product or what they, what they, how they applied it, but they've had a lot of problems with it. So, we hope to not experience that again next year. But I think that is all I have for community reports.
Thank you. I had jail construction and Prairie Lake Solid Waste, which Kevin reported on, and I had the Dancing Sky Area Agency on Aging meeting last week, and it's a busy organization, lots of programming for the elderly, and paid updates on all those programs. And I don't have my information, but the efforts to help people stay in their home are becoming pretty successful and are translating into millions of dollars of savings compared to having people in nursing homes. So, that's the big emphasis right now, is to try and help people stay in their home as long as possible. And it's, it's starting to pay off right now. So, that was it for me. Brian?
Before you go, I had one question. A couple of weeks ago, when I was absent from one of the meetings, you appointed me to Correction Facility, appointed me, and changed it to Solar and Mental Issues. I was just trying to find, isn't that like two different committees, or is it, I mean, the mental issues and the solar issues?
Well, I think, I think the idea there...
Is that going to be the same committee?
I think the idea was that they, they still could be. There's just, we won't, you know, we don't, the solar issue is, is a smaller issue. It's, it's just, I know that Commissioner Mojo's been really researching that, and we just thought that same committee can just deal with both, even though they're independent of each other.
And the mental health is a much...
The mental health is...
Much more involved issue, but we just thought rather than have too many subcommittees, we just combine them.
I think though, the question that maybe Frank is, is expressing is, if we're appointing people onto that subcommittee that have knowledge in social services and, and those issues, that's not necessarily, granted, we will, we'll talk about solar as commissioners, but those aren't the type of people that we necessarily need to have talking about.
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't know that, I don't know that we have to have a committee just for the solar issue then. So, if, if you guys don't want to...
When you're, when you're dealing with that, you can just call in the people that have some expertise in that area to assist you with it, I think, so rather than, you can see how it goes, I guess. See what you think after you get into it, so.
That's what I was...
You're not here, Frank.
I think the main, the main, or the main issue that we really wanted to focus on was the mental illness issue.
I agree with you. It's a very, it's a very big thing, and that's...
But, but we also wanted other commissioners involved with other point aspects of this because it's such a major project. And I agree that some of those same people...
One of the, the reason Jenny brought it up, which was an excellent idea, but Brian talked to Ken Eakin about that, and he thought this would, the solar issue would fit nicely in, in our efforts to get bonding money for a jail project. So, that's really why we want to...
I agree. It's an important issue. I don't have any problem with that.
Those two issues, we're hoping will, you know, assist us in getting some bonding money from the state for our jail project, both, you know, coming up with some, some innovative ideas for dealing with the mental health issues that jails are dealing with and, you know, energy efficiency, so.
I, I just feel like it's two different issues, you know, not to be handled on the same committee, but whatever, we'll work with it.
Brian? Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, I think I mentioned this before, but I'm just going to reiterate it just in case it's, I missed it. The Jim Gartner from the Greater Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development Commission asked me to serve on a Valley Prosperity Partnership Infrastructure Committee. So, that is starting to be engaged, so to speak. So, I wasn't, I wasn't sure I mentioned that before, but unless you have objection to it, I'll certainly plan to serve on that. We did have a meeting in reference to, I'll call it, the Voop property, and that's some property that was bought out on a hardship case down south of Moorhead, and hopefully progressing with that. And that'll be brought to, for your approval or consideration if something moves forward on that. Jenny, Commissioner Mojo was in on that meeting as well, I believe. We had a meeting with Georgia and, and Kirk, reference recycling. Prairie Lakes is cutting back one more bus on our storage facility up on 15th Avenue, and it looks like the recycling would like to make use of that whole building up there. So, we'll be talking about if there's a different place for that one single bus that Prairie Lakes has left. So, we, we had a meeting in regards to that. Not that that's a big issue, but it'll, it'll be an issue. Had a couple evaluations, department had evaluations. Attended Joe Peterson's retirement. Attended Drug Court, and I know Commissioner Gross was at Drug Court as well that day, about a week and a half ago. Attended the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. The jail construction meeting, that's already been addressed, and we thought that next week we would be coming to the board for some property acquisition discussion, and hopefully we can get moving aggressively on that. And I think what, maybe one additional item in regards to that, the architects are planning on making a formal presentation of the work that has been done by the committee and go through the different, the 12 different options that have been studied. And then I think probably that'll be after the next committee meeting, I think, was discussed. And then they will tell you what the committee is suggesting for your consideration. So, that'll be coming within the next, within the next month, so. And with that, Mr. Chair, I think that's about it.
Thank you. Jenny?
I do have one more plug. The Clay County Fair is this week, Thursday through Sunday, and I know that the, the fair board really appreciates our support. I know Thursday is Government Day, and just hope to see as many of you out there as possible.
Jenny, anything?
No, nothing.
Nothing? Okay, let's take a few-minute break here before our public hearing. Our final item on our agenda for the day is a public hearing, a request for rezoning. Tim?
I would move to open hearing.
Oh, that's right.
One second.
Motion and a second, open hearing. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Tim?
Mr. Chair, I'm trying to let Jenny do an introduction here.
I'll start, if you'd let me.
Please.
Just to get you up to speed on the legal side of things, so that before we get to the facts, everybody understands the, the review that needs to, that needs to happen today. This is what is considered a zoning district amendment pursuant to the Clay County Code 8-4-6. And it comes from a recommendation from the Planning Commission, as all these do, but it needs final approval from the Clay County Board. So, the Planning Commission did hear this matter and has made a recommendation, and we've been here before, before the board to have the board vote on this issue. But the acceptance, or the, excuse me, the change of a zoning district to grant the application does require a public hearing. So, we brought this back for public hearing so that we can make sure that any decision that this board makes is done correctly. So, I want to go back and, and give a little bit of history because it's relevant to my recommendation. This piece of property, and Tim will, will give more information about the specifics of the property and the request that's being made. But if we just talk about this piece of property and where we started at when this application was made. It's a 7.66 acre parcel on 46th Avenue South. And in 1992, going back that far, we know that this property was zoned agricultural preservation. Tim, maybe you can, can add. I'm not sure at what point the urban overlay was added. Would it have been in 92 or before that?
No, that would have been in 2005.
Okay. So, in 92, it's zoned agricultural preservation. And then, at or around that time, Moorhead Township asked Clay County to rezone some properties in that vicinity that the township... that the township had zoned highway commercial. And they asked us to zone our properties similarly so that we wouldn't have conflicting zoning requirements on some of those properties. The properties that they requested that we rezone to highway commercial did not include the property in question. They were other properties within the vicinity.
If you look up at the, the overhead, those in yellow are the Moorhead Township, what Moorhead Township had zoned highway commercial and what they requested us in 1992 to also zone highway commercial.
And is it the blue green box that is the property in question?
Yes.
Okay. So in 1992, the Planning Commission held the appropriate hearing and then brought their recommendation to this board to change the portion in yellow there from agricultural preservation to highway commercial to be in line with the township zoning. And this board in 1992 did in fact change that zoning for the yellow box. No change was made for the, the blue box or the parcel in question. Sometime between 1992 and 2005, our zoning map-
Was it after 2005?
Was it after 2005?
Yeah.
Okay. After 2005, our zoning map changed to not only include the yellow box as highway commercial, but also include the parcel to the north as highway commercial, even though no board action had happened to make that change. So Tim describes it in his memo as a mapping error and I know he's gone back with different folks to try to understand how that may have happened, but we frankly don't know how that happened. But it did happen. At the time that the applicants approached the planning department to understand what they needed to do in reference to this property, the map that they were shown or that was discussed did include that property as highway commercial. So it was represented to them as being highway commercial.
Represented to the planning commission?
To, to the parties, the applicants.
The parties and the planning commission.
Yeah, yeah.
And the planning commission.
And the planning commission later. However, if, if we go back to the applicant's actual application to the Planning Commission for zoning change, their application does state that they are requesting a zoning change from agricultural to highway commercial with removal of the urban overlay. So the application actually is correct as to what really exists there for zoning. What was presented to the Planning Commission was an error. The Planning Commission only decided on the removal or non-removal of the overlay. No discussion or consideration was ever given to them as to whether or not the zoning should be changed from agricultural to highway commercial. That was presented to them and Commissioner Mojo sits on that commission. She recalls it was presented to that board as already being highway commercial when it was not legally. With that presentation to the Planning Commission and discussion of all the criteria that the Planning Commission by ordinance is to use to determine whether or not to grant that application, the Planning Commission did in fact vote to deny that application. There were two nay votes, but it did, it did pass to deny that. At that point, that recommendation does still need to come here. And again, we did that in May. We also are doing that today. But this board needs to make the final decision as to whether or not the application is granted or denied. For today's consideration, the board does have to make a decision within 60 days after the Planning Commission's recommendation. So the Planning Commission's recommendation to this board was May 12th. So a decision does need to be made one way or the other today as to whether to deny or to grant the application for zoning change. An approval by this board would take four fifths vote of this board. A denial by this board, the statute indicates would equal no resubmission for one year. So we can't resubmit the same issue for one year. Standard of appellate review, if you look at what this board needs to be aware of if this was to be reviewed, the appellate courts are to give great deference to a zoning decision made by a county board. And on review, the appellate court will uphold the decision if the board has any reasonable articulated justification for its decision. So this board is giving great deference in the facts and the analysis that it does. So with that, I'm going to let Tim go forward and tell us a little bit more about the request and what the content of the request is. And I do have a legal recommendation for the board.
So in May, we just dealt with the overlay. Today, today we're actually looking at changing the zoning.
Correct.
So it's a different issue than we had in May.
That's correct.
Could we, in May, we voted to remove the overlay?
Correct.
Could that have been done without a public hearing?
No, that needs to be done today.
Okay, so we're voting today on either removing or not removing the overlay?
Correct, that's the issue.
And/or the zoning?
The underlying zoning was never addressed by the Planning Commission. Therefore, a recommendation on that zoning has not been made to this board.
So that won't, that does not occur today?
That, that would not be able to occur today because that recommendation has never been made by the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Jenny, you, you raised the, the issue about if there, so, so what we're doing today is we're acting officially on the overlay. I have some real issues that the rezoning was never properly done. But I also, you raised something else that concerns me today is if we deny this, this one-year deal, that they can't come back for one year, in fairness to, to the party who made the request, I believe the zoning issue needs to be cleared up first through the proper process. But at the same point in time, I am concerned that by us denying this today, that, and of course, we still, it's still a public hearing and I'm not going to determine how I vote till I hear your recommendation. But my concern is that, that issue, would they, would they then not be able to come back with the overlay request if the planning, I think the Planning Commission needs to redo this thing for the zoning first. But how does that one-year deal come into play?
Well, I believe that the recommendation was given by the Planning Commission to this board on the single, single issue of whether or not to remove the overlay district. So I believe this board should make a decision on whether or not to remove the overlay district today. However, just removing the overlay district is not going, going to allow the applicants to accomplish what they have proposed to accomplish. So if they continue to wish to move forward with that project, they will need to go back to the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission will need to hear their request to change from agricultural preservation to highway commercial as a separate request. And I don't believe the one-year resubmission rule will apply because that issue was never heard before the Planning Commission and a recommendation was never made. And, and to me, that solves the fairness problem as well because-
So we're going to vote on it today and then we'll, it may become an issue here again in the near future?
There would need to be another Planning Commission meeting, decision by the Planning Commission, recommendation to this board, and then a decision on that issue by this board. So whatever the board does today will not completely resolve the, the issue at hand, but it will be a decision on the overlay district, whether or not to remove that.
Tim, you had, you were going to-
Well, you've heard almost all of it.
Sorry.
I guess, you know, one of the, the issues relative to this going before the Planning Commission as highway commercial was the fact that we had, it had been represented when the, when the inquiry came to the planning office, it was represented as what the map said. And there was an incident, the three, three properties are up there, one of them still has a house on it. And then I got a phone call from a Realtor one day and they asked about the zoning of it. And I, you know, given the map, I said it was highway commercial. And she said, well, then they'll never get a mortgage on it, you know, for a residence. And that kind of made me wonder. So I went back into the files and found the 1992 process that had been gone through with Moorhead Township. And it did not include these three parcels on the north end as highway commercial. When I talked with, with Jenny, you know, the, the problem that arose was we had represented them as highway commercial. And she had mentioned to me that, you know, if you've represented them, then we need to be looking at them as highway commercial. So that's why it came to the Planning Commission that way. Since it had been represented as highway commercial, it was a very hard thing to do to bring it back and say, well, no, it's not. So that's why we heard it that way at the Planning Commission. We made the assumption that it had been represented that way. So that, we took that, that as being the underlying zoning district, not the egg general district that I think it really is. So anyway, and that's why we only made a review of the overlay district. Because at that time, given it had been represented as highway commercial, the assumption was made, all we needed to do is remove the overlay district and it was considered highway commercial. So that's how the Planning Commission heard it and that's why it brought to you the recommendation that it did at the time. You've seen this before, but it is that property up there in blue at Hudson City of Moorhead on 46th Avenue. If you've been by there today, there's no way you can get to it because 46th is closed off and Highway 75 is closed off. But it sits behind another vacant lot and that residence that is still in existence there. The proposal that was made to the Planning Commission was to, once it became highway commercial, was to have three buildings built on the site for rental storage. It takes up, the entire lot comes all the way over to here. So what was being proposed at the time was about a third of the existing parcel. When we reviewed it at the Planning Commission, we looked at the City of Moorhead's extraterritorial and we also looked at their future land use plan. And this happens to fall right in this area here, which the City of Moorhead in their future land use plan has designated as residential. You can also see it here, this area up here in the South Growth Area Plan, the city has designated that area as residential. So here's the parcel as it sits in the residential area, same here. So, and again, when the county did rezoning back in 1992, we rezoned the same thing the township did, which constitutes the yellow area. This was intended to remain egg preservation and in 2005, agricultural general. And we're not exactly sure where the map here came in, somewhere after 2005. The recommendation from the Planning Commission, which was in your packet, was for denial of the removal, given it really didn't meet the county's comprehensive plan provisions. And also, as part of the comprehensive plan provisions, the county in close-in property like this was supposed to give deference to the City of Moorhead's future growth areas and other area plans. Based on that, the Planning Commission moved and voted with two nay votes to recommend to the, the county board to deny the removal of the overlay district. And that's the recommendation that the Planning Commission presented to you at the time.
Frank and Jenny?
I just had one, a couple of questions. The original intent back in 92, was that to go all the way up to 46th Avenue?
No, it was actually parcel specific and it included only those parcels that were in the yellow.
Okay, so the original intent was not to go all the way?
Nope.
Okay. Then eventually it went-
Because the township does not have this area zoned highway commercial, those three parcels to the north.
Now, the next thing Jenny was talking about, we have to vote on removing the urban overlay. Didn't we already vote on that? Or am I misunderstanding this somehow?
We did, but there was no public hearing. And so ordinance requires a public hearing. And so we want to make sure that we published and we allowed everybody that wanted an opportunity to be heard on this issue.
Jenny?
So part of the criticism maybe that we've, that's been aimed towards us is that we're not following the future land use maps or the urban overlays. And maybe you can clarify for me because those parcels are currently zoned, commercial zoning, correct? But then in the, the Moorhead future land map, none of them are necessarily zoned commercial. They're all either zoned low density, medium density, or medium high density residential. So there seems to be a conflict of interest there too. So can you clarify that for me?
Right. I, I guess I'm not one that can explain the future land use or the growth area planning for the City of Moorhead. I do know that representatives of the City of Moorhead here, are here. And I guess that would be a question that I think would be best directed to them. It, it is true that given the current circumstances, yes, the majority of that property is zoned highway commercial-
Correct.
-by the county and by the township. Whereas in the future land use plan for the city, it is intended or at least indicated as being some type of residential.
And, and maybe that's where the whole cloud of confusion is on, on these, these properties, is that there's major missignals. And, and if we're going to continue to allow commercial development, which we have along the Highway 75 corridor, yet if the future land map for, for Moorhead wants that to be residential, we're going to have some, some conflict down the road as, as they want to continue to develop. I mean, there's a bus garage there, there's towers there.
Yes. It is zoned highway commercial, but it all has the overlay district on it, which for all practical purposes negates a lot of the highway commercial possibilities. That's one of the reasons that the applicant made the application for removal of the land, the urban expansion overlay district was to broaden the ability to utilize property in a commercial, commercial way.
I guess, and then my other question is, it seems like, one, there's some gross oversight and assumptions going on, on what it maybe should be zoned as and what it technically is. And so my question is, one, how did the map magically change? And, and two, if this is the case on a small seven acre parcel surrounding Moorhead, what does the entire border of Moorhead look like and will this be something that we have to, to deal with in the future? I mean, that's my concern. Do you know what I'm trying to say? I mean, if we have an overlay on what Moorhead wants to future develop and if we have talent or can't, you know, commercial or something that goes against what, what the city wants to do in the future, we're going to have more than, than one case like this.
I-
That's very likely.
Yeah, I can't argue that we won't. We do have the urban expansion or the urban overlay district, urban expansion overlay does butt up against the city and in most cases extends a mile or even more around the community.
One more question. Is it, my understanding is north of 46th Avenue, what is that, what is their mortgage plans or, I don't know, mortgage? Can you probably answer that? Probably answer that. What is, what is that in their plan?
Again, I would ask that you direct that.
Because I see according to the map, there's no water supplied to that area right now, I think.
There's no water supplied south of Forty-S sixth.
Well.
But even north, there's some areas that are.
Even north and south too. Yeah, I don't know what Mother of Morricent is.
Yeah.
Should have some light.
Anyone else that would like to be heard on this? We have a number of people from Morehead here, so please step up to the mic and. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. My name is John Shockley and I'm the city attorney for Morehead. I have with me today the mayor, council member, and the city planner. And I'd just like to first say that we're respectfully requesting that you deny the rezoning request and keep the urban expansion district in place. I would first like to note that one of the stated goals of your comprehensive plan is that you're supposed to work closely and cooperatively with the city. And I'd just like to take you back a few years, two or three years ago, when Stone Mill Estates, which is just to the north of Forty-S sixth Avenue, had come back to the city, well, to the state in the county tax forfeit. I came here with one of the members of the city asking for some county to work with the county on further developing a relationship so we could take those lots back and get them redeveloped so they would be on tax base for both the city and the county. Well, three years in advance now, we are having that happen. There is residential development north of Forty-S sixth Avenue and in that area, just to the east where the road curves up in Stone Mill, that is going to, that has just been sold by the city and is planned for development here shortly. The intent is to start infrastructure improvements within the next couple of months. So we've been successful in that. And one of the developers just to the north of the road, Eagle Ridge Development, who has partnered with the city in developing that into residential development, is joining in our objection today because they would like to see the area stay residential also. One of the concerns that was expressed is, well, people that live in this area might like additional storage because of all the apartments going up. The Eagle Ridge developers had indicated they oversize their storage, so that really wasn't an issue. I would also, from a practical standpoint, everything south of Forty-S sixth Avenue is outside of the city limits and to the east of Seventy-Five, there are no infrastructure improvements available. There is no water available out there, there's no sewer, there's no storm sewer. Because the development is proposing to displace more than an acre of imperious surface area, it would need to meet stormwater requirements. There is no stormwater access, there's no infrastructure out there to put stormwater retention in, there's just nothing out there. There's no water lines available. So if this development were allowed to go forward, they would be putting in their own infrastructure and in the future, if a development came through, another residential development, the city would be faced with annexing an area that has this infrastructure that doesn't tie into our existing infrastructure. And so I think that's why your comprehensive plan specifically asked for cooperation between the city and the county here. And that's really what we're asking for, is that the county cooperate with the city in this and we're certainly not against development. We want development within the county, but we want planned development that works well with the existing areas around. One of the questions that was presented is, well, is this an inconsistent use since there's highway commercial on the east side of Seventy-Five? That overlay district that's in place virtually controls, or does control, all the development out there, so in the future, as the city annexes the area, we can rezone that based upon residential development in the future. So I don't see it as inconsistent. Going specifically to the issues that have raised in my letter, our first and foremost objection is that we believe that this action would constitute spot zoning. And spot zoning is essentially when you take a smaller parcel of area and attempt to rezone it that's in part of a larger area. And you're only taking seven point six six acres here out of a larger overlay district and attempting to rezone it. And we don't believe that there's any support for doing this, which is one of the criteria that constitutes spot zoning, is it's not consistent with your comprehensive plan. It's not consistent with our prior actions of cooperating on the north property to north of Forty-S sixth Avenue. And it's just an island, it would be just an island in this overlay district. So we believe it would be spot zoning and we don't believe that it's in cooperation with the plans of both the city and the county had made. It also violates your stated goals of that district, which are to work together, to discourage development from occurring at unserviced urban densities outside of cities until urban services can be provided in an orderly and efficient manner. As I previously indicated, this area is not serviced by City of Morehead utilities. There's no water, there's no sewer, there's no storm sewer, which are all important issues. Further, there is no ability to put stormwater retention out there, which would become an issue. From a taxpayer concern for the taxpayers that are north of Forty-S sixth Avenue, most of those properties have been specially assessed for the improvements to Forty-S sixth Avenue. Because this area is outside of the city, we have not been able to specially assess that property. So this landowner would be able to potentially tie in the Forty-S sixth Avenue without having paid any of the assessments that the other property owners in the surrounding area would have paid, which seems fundamentally unfair. In the city's plans, if we annex this area, we would be able to annex or specially assess this area at a later point in time. So those properties that benefit from Forty-S sixth Avenue would then be assessed, being south of Forty-S sixth Avenue. And so because this is outside of the city, it looks attractive for a developer, it has very low special assessments because it's not within the city, so we don't have any authority to specially assess it. So it certainly appears from a developer standpoint to be very attractive, no specials, probably lower cost property, but it's really not. It's benefiting from being slightly outside the city where it can just connect on to Forty-S sixth Avenue. I would also note that the proposed zoning, if you remove the urban or the UED district, you need to really look at what the proposed zoning uses would be allowed under that new zoning. You could have commercial agriculture, automobile truck service, auto truck, trailer, garden farm equipment sales, a bar, lounge, nightclub, bowling alley, building material sales yard, motor fuel station, wholesale business and warehousing, parking and loading areas, travel trailers and vehicles. One of the issues that courts will always look at is when you're going through rezoning is you're supposed to look at what's permitted under the zoning, not what the applicant is proposing to do, because the applicant could present to you a wonderful detailed development plan and why they want it rezoned. It's rezoned and the next day, there is nothing restricting them from turning around and selling it to another person that builds what is permitted under the zoning uses. And so from the city's perspective, we're very concerned about this proposed rezoning because we don't believe it's consistent with the comprehensive plan that was developed with the county and the city and we don't believe it's consistent with the stated goals of this development. And further, we don't believe that it is a lawful zoning because we believe it's a spot zoning based upon the facts and circumstances. And I can certainly answer any questions and the planner from Morehead is here also to answer some of the more planning and technical questions.
Thank you, questions, Wayne?
Again, today, this board is not voting on the zoning.
The board would need to vote on the zoning as it pertained to the urban overlay district only.
I thought you said earlier, we were voting on the overlay district.
Yes, the urban overlay district. That's, it's zoned, it's zoned and then on top of the zoning, it has an urban overlay district zoning. That was the issue that was presented to the planning commission and that's what Mr. Shockley speaks of as well, is the UED, the urban expansion district, yes.
Right.
If I was to build ten houses there, if I was to develop one and build, could I build ten houses there? Is it zoned properly that I could build ten houses?
Right now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, it's still zoned highway commercial, is it? What's it zoned by the township?
It's zoned ag with the township.
Ag by the township.
If we assume that it's zoned agricultural by the county, it's one breed, isn't it? Well, no, because the City of Morehead has the jurisdiction to allow subdivision there. Technically, yes, but again, since it's not serviced and the City of Morehead has the jurisdiction to say yes or no to a plat there, probably not.
So I can't build residential, I can't build commercial?
If it was one or two houses, that might fly. But again, if there was a split of that property, that's the City of Morehead's jurisdiction to say yes or no.
Well, I'll go with one or two houses then. Can I build one or two houses?
You could build one, for sure. And again, if you wanted to split the property, the City of Morehead would have the authority to say yes or no to that. So since the property is a single parcel, you could build one, for sure.
But to follow up on that, an applicant for residential development could ask to have it platted into ten or twelve or twenty, but it would require the approval of the City of Morehead.
Correct.
For, and then the residential, so the key there is that that would require the city's approval because of the subdivision regulations in the two mile jurisdiction, right?
In the extraterritorial jurisdiction, the City of Morehead has authority to grant or deny the split of property, be it splitting it in half, being it doing a plat, whatever. They have the authority to grant or deny that right to split property in their two mile extraterritorial jurisdiction.
I agree with that. Let's say my original question was, if I wanted to build just one residential house, what would have I had to done? Would have had to gone to the planning commission?
Nope. To want to build a residential structure there, you come in, get a building permit from the county.
And I could have built a house there?
Yes, sir. Right. You'd be on private well, private septic, because there are no services to it right now.
And that goes to one per eighty acres, isn't that what our rule is now?
We have a one per forty.
One per forty, okay.
But this is a, this is a lot of record, so we could allow a single dwelling there.
So could you build?
There's nothing there, there's no residential there.
No.
So in point three of Mr. Shockley's letter, he says he could build an auto truck, trailer, garden, equipment sales, bar, cocktail lounge, whatever one you want to choose. Say number seven, can he build a fuel station there?
It all goes back to, what are we assuming the underlying zoning is? If it's assumed to be agricultural general, no. If it's assumed to be highway commercial, yes.
This assuming is driving me crazy. I mean, that's the issue with it, is that we're, there's too many questions regarding it.
Well, I don't think we should make any assumptions. I think, you know, my legal opinion and what I would pass on to the board is that it is currently zoned agricultural. Nothing has ever taken place officially to change that, other than a mapping error.
So that's the way it's zoned?
So based on that, no, they could not.
So removing or not removing the overlay district at this point will not, either way, will not allow the applicants.
To build.
To build what they've proposed to build or any of the one through ten listed in Mr. Shockley's letter. What will dictate that would be is if then they then choose to go back to the planning commission.
For rezoning.
For rezoning from ag to highway commercial.
But if we deny the removal of the overlay, then that locks them into one year prior to.
Then it makes everything else pretty moot.
Yes, correct.
And if I, if I could just, when we drafted the letter, we were under the assumption that the decision had been made by the county to treat it as highway, that it had been rezoned and that it was not ag. So that's, my letter assumes that facts that were at that time. So if, obviously if it's ag, it changes it, but we're still opposed to changing it from the UED district. We would, we would request, respectfully request, that you deny the request to change it.
Any other questions for Mr. Shockley? Anybody else from the city that would like to be heard? Mayor? Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning. Good to see you and we should do more of this, frankly, except on the same side, hopefully. But more conversation, I think, is good. And the more we get together and do things together, the better. I was asking Christie if she was around when they, when they did this, but my understanding is back then, the county, the city did work together on the plans when they made them. And in the meantime, people built houses, made plans. I wrote a little bit, if you don't mind me writing, I had so many other things in my head when I heard about you guys were meeting, not till last night, truthfully. I needed to write it down or I was going to like forget stuff, I thought. And I said, you may have heard that Morehead is the best city in the US and you may have heard that we're the healthiest housing market in Morehead. But I could tell you the best thing I like about Morehead is really its sense of community and its sense of neighbors. And that's what planning does for us. Planning, planning is what builds those communities so that you can have good, strong neighborhoods. And so I am very for what would this, the community, the county, and the city worked together before that when they did this. Houses were built in the meantime, thinking that that's what this would be. And the other piece I wanted to mention is I have a plat drawing in my office. I met with the owner at his request on, actually a different issue, truthfully, but he came in with his realtor and he has, for that area surrounding this, he has a plat drawing for residential in that area that I think could make sense. He would obviously have to go through the, a number of processes. It's non-annexed, he would perhaps, you know, probably have to go to the county, so you may be hearing from him too. But I can tell you offhand that the owner of the land is thinking about that and wanted to have a conversation with me and that's, that's what we did already. And so I'm glad you're asking good questions. A lot of this was done before a lot of us were here, but truthfully, I know they were done for good reasons. And it's not like a commission or a council can't override things that were done like that, but I think when we do that as elected officials, we have to do that very thoughtfully. We have to ask all the right questions. We have to not only visualize that one piece of property that you're talking about right there, but you have to talk about, you have to think about all the things beyond that and what it involves with everything around that. And I look forward to doing more with the county commission. I know we have a lot of good things going and this, because we are growing, like I said, we are the healthiest housing market in Minnesota right now. I would guess this would be not the last time we'll talk about this again. And so, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mike? House member Hewlett?
Good morning, I'm Mike Hewlett. I represent Ward Three of the City of Morehead, which is just adjacent to this property across the street. And I just want to report to you that I have heard from a good number of my constituents in this area who have been under the impression that, based on our urban overlay plan and the comprehensive plan, that what would be developed in the future in that area north of the bus area would be like a mirror image of what's occurred on their side. And so I just want to report to you that there are a number of constituents who are very concerned about that changing, that they are under the impression that it would be kind of an expansion across the highway of that neighborhood. And so, again, I would also respectfully request that you give strong consideration to maintaining the urban overlay. Thank you.
Thank you. How about, Tim or Jenny, do you have a recommendation for us on this issue?
Well.
Oh, please.
Thanks again for giving us an opportunity to speak.
Thanks again for giving us an opportunity to speak. You know, you've pretty much heard our story last meeting. One thing that I, I guess I'll just repetitive again, but it's impossible to have a mere situation across the road because of what we already have down here. The bus garage, the towers, the woodworking place, and a few other places. What we are proposing to, to build is storage units. It's not strip joint, it's not a gas station, it's not any of that. You know, we think we'd be quite an asset to the community. We think we'd be providing service, and, and I can guarantee you, it will look aesthetically very nice. You know, as, as we mentioned, what, what we've done with our hotel, and what we continue to carry through with that. I've had a great working relationship, again, with the city of Morehead. Little bit confused and disappointed, to be honest. We, we've reached out to the mayor's office after the zoning committee, and we were not returned any calls. Ray called you four times?
I have not received a call.
Okay, well, as you know, with today's technology, we can, we can prove that out. So I mean, there's just, there's been confusion with that before we get into the paper, and, you know, it just, it's something that we continue to want to work with the city. We continue to want to be an asset. We're, we're very excited about the city of Morehead. It is growing, it is expanding. But I, I just fall back to that, we already have commercial there. Across Avenue Forty, Forty-S sixth Avenue, as we heard at the last meeting, there's gonna be like, commercial because of the pipeline coming through there. So I, I don't feel that we're totally spot. We're, we're sort of fitting in. And then also with the expansion of the four-lane road, there's gonna be more traffic. There is high line wires running right here, which is in the use of the building, residential homes underneath them. So I would think, as, as we've seen in other parts of the city and in the metro, there'll be a buffer. And yes, I agree that there will be commercial, or residencies behind it, and, and that I know with the proper light commercial in front of it, it provides that buffer from the highway, and it just adds to the whole process. So, you know, and then, thank you, you did explain very clearly what happened on the previous map. We did check with your office, with the zoning and planning office, and then we went forward and made our offer on the property, because it was zoned commercial. They, since then, you know, they gave us the facts of what it really was, but there has been some confusion. And even at the last meeting, I have approached, I talked with, with Christie at the city of Morehead, of a non-annexed, you know, so we're not trying to hide from any assessments or specials or taxes. And she explained that it just wasn't possible yet because of the sewer system. If we need storm runoff, we will build a retention pond, which is done all over town. So I mean, if, if there's a requirement for that, we have enough property, we can put a little pond to take care of our storm runoff, so it doesn't get into anyone else's property. As, as we mentioned earlier, we're not, we don't require water for what we're doing. So, the long and the short, we're doing our best to cooperate and, and work with everyone, and that's what we want to continue to do. And we will communicate better. We'll make sure that we get a hold of, of everyone in the city of Morehead and, and follow through with all of that, so. Ben, you have anything?
Good morning. I'm Ben Woodside, and I'd also like to reiterate what Brent said about what we plan on putting there. It's not gonna be a sore eye. I think city, they named a number of different things that they want on that piece of property, and what we want to do there, they didn't name, and it seems like that's the only thing they don't want there, if it were to get rezoned there. And the way Brent and Ray and I do business, there wouldn't be a sore eye, and I think it'd be a wonderful asset to, to Morehead and all the people around this plot of land here. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Did you have a recommendation for us on this?
I do, as it, you know, I've, I've laid out to you what I think needs to be decided today, and what doesn't need to be decided today, from a legal standpoint. Other than the, the number one in Mr. Shockley's letter, I don't agree that, that this would constitute spot zoning. We, we differ on that. But other than that, I don't disagree with anything he said. I, I really believe that this is just a, a difference of opinion. We've all heard the same facts. I don't think the facts are in question. I just believe there's a difference of opinion, as, as this board evaluated the request in the same way that there's a difference of op, a difference of opinion as to what the planning commission decided. So I don't necessarily have a recommendation as to what your decision should be, but I did want to provide for you the criteria by which the planning commission used to make their decision. And I think all these criteria are relevant and should be considered when the commission is making their decision, their decision as well. So I will hand these out, and they, they come from the Clay County ordinance, again, under section D, at the bottom half of the page, number two. Where it, I'm sorry? Sure.
I was gonna say, they're also in your pa-
They're also in the packet.
Also in your packet.
But on a page of the planning commission report.
Be on the, that last page of the staff report for the planning commission.
But the ordinance does not require the board to use these criteria. It requires the planning commission to use these criteria, but I think they're relevant in making your decision. So it's the la, the bottom half of the page, D, two, findings, additional findings, and then it's A through E. Burden on public utilities, relation to overall needs, consistency with ordinance, conflict with comprehensive plan, and prematurely stimulate public investment in utilities. Also, number one, effect of proposed use, would be one that would need to be considered as well. The safety, health, morals, and general welfare of the surrounding lands, existing in anticipated traffic conditions, and the effect on agriculture in the surrounding area. These are not by any means limited to what you could consider, but I think they provide a good guideline of things to talk about. And again, the issue to be decided today is whether or not the urban overlay district should be removed from this parcel. Not as to the agriculture, to highway zoning, that may have to be addressed in the future, depending on what this board decides. But I do think we should make a decision on that, as the sixty days would prevent further review of this after today.
Wayne?
The meeting where we voted to remove the overlay district, is that a moot point now?
In the sense that, that is not binding, is that what you mean?
Okay. So what we do today would be binding?
Yes.
Okay. Say we vote today not to remove the overlay district. What is the next issue, then, for the two gentlemen who are just in front of us on their proposal? To go back to the planning commission to seek rezoning?
If this board decided not to remove the overlay district, they could not seek removal of the overlay district for a year. So they would not be able to go back to the planning commission to seek removal of the overlay district, which would need to occur before the storage facilities could be built.
What about the zoning issue? Could zoning, could do something about the zoning issue before the overlay district?
Well, the overlay district is a zoning issue.
It's one of the same.
There's two, two zoning issues, and unfortunately, this is somewhat putting the cart before the horse. But without removal of the overlay district, no zoning, no other zoning change could help them accomplish-
Thank you.
-what they wish to accomplish.
Come on.
Just wanted to address a little bit of the confusion. You know, it's just, it's, it's done, it happened, but it would have really been nice if, if the proper request would have been brought to the zoning and planning committee, and then we won't maybe be here. But, you know, so I, I just would ask you to consider our part of the deal, you know, that really wasn't any fault of ours on, on what was presented to the zoning and planning committee. And, but I, I see there's a real possibility I'm gonna be paying a heavy consequence for it, so, just the consideration.
I think we all agree that it was an inferior problem here.
And, and, you know, I'm willing to work forward with anything, do whatever we have to do. So no, no problem with that, but, thank you.
Thanks. Kenny?
I think for a process that has been clouded with assumption and confusion and, and maybe some mapping errors, it's unfortunate that a developer would have to suffer consequence because we didn't have all of the ducks in a row before they came. My vote today will be to remove the overlay, one, because the lack of clarification caused the technical confusion. And it will hold their hands for any rezoning request, basically, for a year. But this will also allow them to go back to the planning commission, follow the, get exactly what they need to do, and ask what they need to do, or what they need to move forward. Will allow them to have more fluid conversation with the city and the township and the, the planning commission and, and us as well. But voting to remove that overlay will not be a vote to put shovels in the ground to build a storage unit tomorrow. There's, it's a long process that will, will need to happen.
I'm gonna reverse my vote from last time. I'm gonna vote not to remove the overlay due to the fact that there have been so many concerns, and we did not have our ducks in a row, as you, as you said. And hopefully, things within a year's time for the developers can be changed if township in the city decides to go along with that.
Any other comments? Kevin?
This is extremely frustrating. When we met in May, and we voted four to one to remove, my vote was based on the information presented to me that it was already zoned highway commercial. It's not technically zoned highway commercial. That concerns me. I'm not sure, to be honest with you, where my vote would have been, had I known those facts, but it may have changed. I agree with Commissioner Mojo that this is really difficult on the part of the applicant. There was financial decisions made, you know, based on what was presented. This overlay district, I mean, I could, I could vote to remove the overlay district, but I don't know now that because this is not zoned proper highway commercial, that I would vote to re, to change that. And that was the basis of my original vote. So I, I'm really, I'm really torn on this one. This one is, it's upsetting to me that, that we're in this position, but it is what it In the grand scheme of things, a year isn't the worst-case scenario, but I, I don't, I'm gonna-
Any other comments?
Well, I just look at, you know, Morehead's proposed zoning for that as residential, you know. And I just look, as we enter Morehead, you know, what should we look at, see Morehead? You know, we come from the west, it's, we go through Fargo, we go through the east, we come through Delaware, come to the north, we go through Compost Side, Lagoon Side, Sugar Beet Plant. And we come from the south now, if it's all residential, we're gonna see the backs of wooden fences, you know. And I don't know whether commercial development wouldn't look nice coming in there, seeing some nice commercial development in there, you know. I don't know, I'm not a city planner, not involved in all that, but I just don't see coming into Morehead South that we wouldn't want to present something more than wooden fences in the back of them. Because that's what's going up in the back of these residential areas, pretty much as we're coming into Morehead, I think so.
Commissioner Rose raises, raises a good point, and it's something that I did want to emphasize in this process. And I know this road is a gateway into the community, and I know that the city of Morehead makes some decisions based on that as well. In my district, as Frank just mentioned, on the corner of, of Fifteenth and Highway Seventy-Five, the gateway into Morehead, there sits a massive, beautiful storage facility. And I, and I'm saying, it is very nice. As you come in from the north, straight north of the Holiday Gas Station, surrounded by residential areas, and, and two commercial establishments, is a well-done storage facility. These, I think these can be complementary to residential areas. But the, the issue goes back to the zoning issue, and I'm, I'm just extremely frustrated that this mapping error occurred, and I-
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, remove the clause of public hearing?
Second. We have a motion on the second clause of public hearing. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Okay, one of the board's wishes, need a motion either to remove the overlay or to leave it in place.
I'll make a motion to remove the overlay with the request that they go back to the planning commission with the correct requirements for zoning.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, would you call the roll, please?
We will, yeah. Any further discussion? Now, Jenny, you said we need four out of five votes to pass?
Four pass, it's four fifths.
Four fifths, okay. Okay, Vicki, you wanna call the roll?
Careful.
No.
Rose?
Yes.
Hetersaw?
No.
Mojo?
Yes.
Wayne?
No. Okay, the motion does not pass, so the overlay stays in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other business, Brian, that we've got for the day? Any other issues? All right, gentlemen.